Staff ready? All right. We'll go ahead and call to order the September 23, 2025 City Council Workshop. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Start with the discussion of recovery efforts in the flood event. Who's going to start us off? Charlie, by default, you are starting.
Yes, sir. I don't want to ever be presumptive. So, we, what, two weeks ago? We talked about this, and so seeing a few slides, the amount of stuff that gets pulled in two weeks. Same pictures. Same shots from last time. The debris cleanup, ma'am.
So on 173, where the Southern Oaks Baptist Church site is, there's another pile. Is that our pile? It's clearly, uh, it's reserved.
I don't know, because so...
Oh, across the River Hill?
So, the ownership over there is not us.
Oh, okay.
I think it's actually River Hill.
All right, that's my question.
But it looks like it would be us, right? Kind of that big gap between the River Trail and the road right there. I'll have to double check.
There's a nice pile, kind of like the one you just showed.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, so there's...
Like, it's like that, but bigger.
Yeah. They are doing what they can to separate out, because it is, you know, parts of it is, it's easier to chip debris when it's all kind of the same size. If you don't have like huge piles of big giant logs, and then little bitty debris when they put it through those chippers.
Exactly how that works.
So you know exactly what it is.
We don't do this magnitude, but...
I would, I would hope not.
Our fireplace is not that big.
I used to do this for a living, and I don't miss standing next to a chipper all day. Turn it on, turn it off, turn it on, turn it off.
I'm the collector.
So, the River Trail cleanup continues. I think there's a good portion between, and we'll talk about it here a little bit more, between G Street and Camp Meeting Creek. It's close to being ready for us to, you know, work on opening that up. We talked about, Parks talked about October, beginning of October, for that section on G Street, both, on both sides. The section that would go from here to Camp Meeting Creek, and then the section that would go from here to Shriner, right? One of the biggest pieces that they have to address, though, is there's a bunch of debris that's on the ground. And that's all well and good, they can pick it up, they can plot whatever it is. Hangars, limbs that were damaged that are hanging in the trees, right? Debris that's hanging in the trees. Those, then they come in, they've got to grab, they've got to get those with a grapple, and, you know, if you're on the Shriner side of the River Trail, it's not a whole lot of space over there, right? So, you got a little bucket truck and extend it up, and you can take those pieces out. And that's kind of the, that's, that's the latter part of what they're doing. So, it's a little more finer work that they're going to get into, to get those pieces. But we're hopeful that beginning of October, we'll be able to open up at least that section, right? We asked about the section between G Street and Louise Hayes Park, but right now, it's a little too early to tell, because that still has, they still got to get in there and clean out those, those hangars. And those are some very tall trees, and normally you wouldn't be worried about it, but the water was that high that it, that it pushed them in there.
All metal, large objects, like metal pieces from porta-potties and things, not up there?
I think most of that's out, but again, it's kind of that stuff that was just where the, where the grapple couldn't reach. They're going to have, you know, kind of a specialized piece of equipment that goes in there and jack up, basically, to start getting that stuff out.
All on someone?
Mm-hmm. And that's the reason we don't want to open it up, right? When you look at it, it looks pretty clean at this point. If you're near Louise Hayes Park, if you're, you know, driving down on Camp Meeting Creek, areas where there are no trees, you don't have to worry about it. But we just, I would hate for any of that to just be, you know, something they missed. So they're going through it with kind of a fine-tooth comb. Then, once you get, so that's, you know, it has to stop at Camp Meeting Creek, because the bridge is no longer there, right? And then, the same goes for down to KSP, we can open up those sections to walk in there. From Lemos to the Deert, we still have a considerable amount of work to do. Earthwork, dirtwork, stabilizing the base underneath the trail itself. And so that's, we don't know yet on that section. Today, I don't have a good update as far as when that would be. It's not complicated work necessarily, but we have the debris team that's working in Kerrville. They're saying they're going to work on those, and so hopefully, they can take care of a lot of that for us. Otherwise, we'll have staff go out, or we'll have a contractor go out and do that remediation for us. Again, the sites out at Soccer Field and at Center Point are kind of the domain, main debris sites. Two weeks ago, we talked about there being 955,000 cubic yards of debris, and that's 1.3 million at this point. We had a conversation earlier in a debris, on the debris call with the state, we have one every day, and they are efficient, I will give them that. We're, we're done in 15 minutes, usually. What estimates, people are asking, you know, how much more is left? And I think everybody's a little reluctant to give like a specific number. But I would, we talked about, or the, the TDM folks and the debris folks talked about a half a million cubic yards, getting to a million five, that was kind of a number, and then another half a million on top of that, so maybe 2 million cubic yards, which is a huge sum, right? They've done, there's been about 900 folks who have signed up to allow TDM to get onto their property and to help clean up that debris. I think they're about a third of the way done with that list, so 600 more properties to get to. At, TDM was asking, why aren't we through more of them? They're, they're very detailed. If they miss anything, or if they have to come back and get something that is out of their reach, or to come back in with a specialized piece of equipment, it takes multiple trips potentially to get into somebody's site and close that site out. So they are working hard, there's, there was 300 trucks on the road, I think we're down to 200 or less at this point, because the work is now, I think, confined to those, those parcels, more or less. There isn't, there isn't that much right-of-way work left to be done. And... Well, that's, okay, so I was going to ask if y'all had questions about debris, mulch, electronics, white goods, anything?
No.
I was fortunate, and I guess that's fortunate, I don't know, that might not be the right word, but Jay took me last week down the River Trail, Camp Meeting Creek, all the way back up to the Deert Center.
Yep.
Those guys and gals that are out there working are busting it. I mean, they're getting the stuff done. Some erosion underneath the trail that we could see up by the Deert Center. Biggest thing that, you know, I saw was like the, the bridge railing right there at the Deert, or the...
Francisco Lemos.
Francisco Lemos, they're, you know, pretty much gone, so it'd be dangerous for somebody to do that. But it was, uh, to see the cleanup and to see it from that perspective now, it's totally, totally different. So, I was contacted by a constable here about Town Creek. I don't know if y'all have talked about Town Creek or seen Town Creek, but when he was going through after everything happened, from the Deert Center to Town Creek Bridge, right there by Gibson's.
Yeah.
It took 45 minutes to get through there, he said there was so much debris. He said there's debris all the way back up to Shriner Street that you can see, like personal property debris. And he goes, "We have the resources here, they're going to clean that out, so next time it happens," because we know sooner or later it will happen again, "but if it's a, if it rainfall and it comes down Town Creek, it's going to dump all that stuff right back onto the Guadalupe side."
Yeah.
I didn't know if you were aware of that, or somebody talked to you about it, but I know you're kind of the one heading this up, Michael, so we can talk about it later, if you want the confirmation.
No, I'll double check with those folks, they are going into the creeks, they're not just isolated to just that main river section. How far back they're going to go is, is part of the question. Everything up in those creeks is all right of entry, so they have to get permission from all those property owners, so they may be part of that 600 still left to go, right? So they're, if they're focusing on the main river section, and then they will move out to there. But I'll double check with them and bring that back.
Just the observation by, by him?
No, it's a good observation, because the, the water went a mile back in some cases on those tributaries, and so it created its own debris pile, you know, that is part of the flood.
Need to ask the council something. Has everyone had a tour of Louise Hayes? So, we all...
Park is not so much as the trail, but that was a month or so ago.
They'll give you a tour if you want another.
I know, yeah.
What's next, Michael?
Well, so where are we outside of the debris? Julie and her team, and all of us, at a certain point have been meeting with FEMA to talk about projects, for public assistance projects, right? So, the way this all worked was, what was the emergency? What will TDM take on as a project, and they own it, right? And when does that go from an emergency, and TDM is controlling it, to, okay, now this is recovery, and this is the responsibility of the local jurisdiction, right? And so I think we've exhausted all of the, you know, emergent situations as far as TDM is concerned. There's no new projects coming through that, that are going to be, let's say, owned by TDM, right? Where they are getting reimbursed by FEMA, those are going to be kind of our projects. So you'll see on the right there, there's, if you can see it, there's several categories of different project types. We have some of each, and so those, the project for the River Trail. Now, while we could do that as a public assistance project, and we may still, we do have funds from our insurance that we got from TML, and so while the majority of those funds will go towards infrastructure, not all of it will be needed for those infrastructure pieces. And so, we looked at what is the main, what, what is, what is something that will have a high impact that we can handle relatively easily? And then fixing those railings on the River Trail along towards the library. Working on replacing Camp Meeting Creek Bridge, so that the River Trail is whole. And, because we hear it, and I'm sure you hear it 10 times more than we do, when can we get back on the River Trail? So those are on our list to get done soon. One of the other projects that we hear about all the time is Bear Creek. And so, we initially started Bear Creek Bridge, that's the low-water crossing, that's our responsibility. That initially started as a star request, because we looked at that and we said, "Well, that's an emergency situation. If you live close to that bridge, you have, you know, a longer drive." And emergency services having to get there has to take that long road around now. They can't just take that quick trip there. You know, and I think it's a hard decision for FEMA and for TDM, when they look at those things, what, how, what qualifies? And so, they looked at that and they said, "No, that's a public assistance project." And so, staff is working on finalizing the, kind of, cost estimates for the temporary bridge to go on Camp Meeting, or to go on Bear Creek.
Bear Creek, if you...
Of Arcadia Loop.
Okay.
Yeah, right up that way. And it, it's a bridge that connects straight to the county out there. And so, as soon as we get that, we'll start working on that public assistance project, and that's the short term. The long term is, we have to go put RFQs out for engineers, follow the FEMA guidelines for procurement, and so get an engineer to draw an estimate, and basically, the, it's a replacement versus a repair. And the way that FEMA handles that is either it's 50% of the, 50% of it's destroyed, and that's usually reserved for homes, building structures, things like that, versus public infrastructure, where it's what is the cost of the replacement? And the cost of the replacement brings it up to a today's standard, it's an old crossing. I can't imagine that the cost of that repair permanently is going to be more than 50% of the cost of tearing it all out and putting in a whole new bridge. And so that's kind of the guidelines that FEMA uses for, for repair versus replacement. So we expect that that to come back as a repair of that bridge versus a full replacement of it. And that project will take at least a year. For the, you know, it's going to take a while to do the engineering, it's, you know, you see projects come through here all the time. So, do the engineering on it, let the project, put it out for construction, and so it'll take a little bit of time. Now, the temporary bridge, hopefully, in the next meeting, I'll have a better timeline for you on when we should have that there. We're getting closer, that's what I can say.
What kind of bridge is, is that going to be, Michael? Is that...
Temporary bridge?
I'm just, I'm thinking because the way the Texas National Guard was, they have temporary bridges that they use, and that might be a resource to look at with General Sawyer, or Switzer, whatever his name was.
That very well could be, yeah, we could, we certainly could ask. There's not a whole lot of temporary bridge builders out there, so it's, it's kind of a short list. Stuart does know one, Baron, and so we've, we've gotten some preliminary numbers, but we have to have at least three quotes as far as the product. So more to come on that. But we do know that's a priority, we know that, you know, we want to make sure that people have quicker access to get back across that bridge. See other projects? River Trail, Camp Meeting Creek Bridge, the pedestrian bridge, staff is going to handle the, we're going to have to close down the pedestrian bridge, even when we open up, because the asphalt all tore up. And it's a thick amount of asphalt, it's not like a, like a, like a road base, it's a, it's a good six-inch layer. So you can't have somebody, and if somebody's in a wheelchair, they're, they're, you know...
You're talking about the G Street pedestrian?
The G Street pedestrian bridge, sorry, did I say Bear Creek?
Oh, I just didn't say so.
Yeah, G Street pedestrian bridge, we're going to do that one in-house. So we'll include the base with any of the other projects that streets are working, and now we add to that, and then they'll run that course. So hopefully, that won't be too far behind when we open up that section of trail. Louise Hayes Park, I think the reimagining of Louise Hayes Park is kind of a, you know, what is it going to look like? We need to start having those conversations. The Parks Advisory Board is going to meet in October. We've kind of, the mayor and some of the staff and Parks Board President kind of had a preliminary meeting, talked about what it could look like. Structurally, where do we need to place things? You know, we need to not have those things inside the... Thank you. I forgot the word.
Become a very popular word.
And so, what does that all look like? But I don't want too much grass to grow for all of us before we have a plan that we can put forth to FEMA or whomever, because it'll take a while to, to do any kind of rebuilding. We get requests daily, I think y'all do as well, for folks who are like, "Let me go plant a tree down at the park, and let me go do this down at the park." I don't want to be, I don't want us to have to say yes to something and then turn around and go, "Oh, well, that kind of conflicts with the plan here, we got to tear that out." That sounds like the worst idea possible. So we're trying to tell everybody to just exercise a little patience, and there's some other areas in town that we could probably do that without, you know, affecting whatever vision you all come up with for Louise Hayes Park. So that, I think it's, that's kind of a long, long game there. Guadalupe Park, we're looking at the replacement still, to tear that out, and talking with some of the donors on that. So we're still finalizing all those, all those particulars. Six lift stations had damage to them, they've been fixed, but those are PA projects that we can ask for funding, you know, retroactively. Tree Bridge, I think that's kind of, that's a lot of what we're going after right now. Our deadlines are coming up quickly for requests for PA from FEMA. So that's kind of, we have our laundry list, and we're throwing it all, and FEMA's been great helping us kind of work through what that list should look like. And staff has had ample time to bring stuff up, we talk about it daily. But with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, for any questions y'all might have.
Any questions or comments?
No, I'll pass this time.
Yeah, why not, since we're here? I talked to Austin Dixon the other day after Rotary, and he said that they're working with the Spurs and the Rockets in a conjunctive effort for the Guadalupe Park. And we talked a little bit more in depth, because for quality of life, I mean, this has been brought up by so many people, only five of us here tonight, but it was brought up big last time at the meeting. Why aren't we using the money that was given to the foundation? And Austin said, "For quality of life situations, parks, things like that, they are allowed to help, but that money cannot go into a gap in the budget, but it can go to quality of life," which I, I know that you know that, but I thought it was really awesome that the Spurs and the Rockets are trying to do something to help that park, because I know the mayor and I drive by every day to and from work, and before the devastation of July the 4th, that thing was being utilized by 15 or 20 people every day at least, every time I drop by there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was heavily used.
Deert, hello?
No.
I actually did have one to answer.
Go ahead, please.
Missed your turn.
Sorry, I know, I, I'm trying not to talk too much tonight, it's so hard to do. So, I'm working with a group of people, which might, this might, we may overlap with other groups, because there seems to be a lot of groups, you know, helping and doing things. But it came up, we had a, a meeting last week here about trees, and about riparian improvements to the river's edge. So, it'll be, we'll get together, we'll get all these groups together at some point. But we did get the green light verbally, that this Trees for Texas will donate up to 1,000 trees a year for five years. So the, the scenario will be, what kind do we want, is best for us, we need some arborists to help us with that. And then placement of where these is very important. And so that might take some more time to, to allow for whatever Louise Hayes Park begins to look like in the new phase of its life. We don't want to put trees where, like Michael said, we'll end up having to remove them for something. But anyway, so there's a, I think that's kind of cool, that they, they came to us out of San Antonio and Houston, and San Antonio Botanical Garden and Trees for Texas out of Houston is wanting to do that for us, so that's just FYI.
Thank you for taking leadership on that. Did you have something, sir?
No, go ahead, Mayor.
Mr. Hornis, before the flood, you were already managing many, many projects. Some of those are finally finished, like the Callow Theater, others are ongoing. And I want to say thank you, to you, for, for your efforts in keeping all the projects going toward the finish line. I get it, but I want to say thank you to you for what you've done.
Of course, of course, I'm elated to do it, you know?
Maria had your plate overfilled before the flood. And I have been up City Hall several times, and he's on the phone, he's working, he's doing it, all right. Any other staff on this?
I have one more thing. So, as you saw today, the, the memorial that was out in front of the Callow Foundation property is, is gone as of this morning, and they've, they've done a great job, they were, I was, what, they were packing it up gently, and it's found a good home. We will have to consider this at some point in the future, because there is a, a large memorial along the Guadalupe Park, right? You know, it creates some issues for us, the weather is going to certainly affect a lot of those things. I don't have an answer for where that should go, I think there's some people smarter than me working on that. But at a certain point, that'll also happen out there. Doesn't need to happen anytime soon, parks are closed at this point. But once we reopen them, I think it, it would behoove us to have a plan for where those could go. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments? All right, let's move on to Cur Economic Development Corporation. Todd, would you like to start us off?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, Council. Speaking of boards and groups, and I wanted to show you guys a quick, a quick look at what Cur Together currently looks like. And we will definitely get you together with the River Riparian Group. They are working with the San Antonio Botanical Gardens and multiple tree, plug you right in to that, and that, that will, that will really help. And that group is very large, very active, very blessed to have everybody working. They're already going to make a submission here, I believe, on Friday for some seeds and some plants and some sages to be, have to be planted now, have to grow now, so that we can put them along the riverbanks next year. But yeah, we'll definitely get you plugged into that, I think that would be great, and get everybody pulling on the same, same end of the rope. So, real quick here, this is just the Cur Together Long-Term Recovery Group. This has evolved and continues to evolve. Across the top, you'll see the Cur Together Chair of the Long-Term Recovery Board, that is former Mayor Judy Eichner. You've got the Cur EDC Steering Committee, that would be me as a board member. We've got the Business Recovery Working Group, that is Chris Hughes out of the Ingram area that is leading that up. And when I say within an area, these are not specific, these are areas that are across the county. These organizations are focused all the way across from the far east to the far western end of the county. We have Funding Coordination Working Group, that is led by Mark Hoffler, is leading that, that organization. And you've got the River Flood Warning System, which is led by Tara Bushno and UGRA. The River Group is led by Jonathan Letts and his organization. They are, again, they are extremely active, they've got a plan in place, they're working with San Antonio Botanical Gardens for a long-term tree replacement and planting, which is going to involve the citizens to be a part. They're currently doing seed gathering along the river, so that the, the, the plants that we're going to go back are native, and it's the seeds from the original riverbank and the trees that lost those seeds during that time. So, they're doing great work. We have the Housing Construction Management portion of the Long-Term Recovery, which is led by John Dunn. And his co-chair on that is Mary Campos with Habitat for Humanity. They have that split from the far eastern to the far western end of the county, working currently with the Community Foundation, who announced the $40 million for the rebuild, repair, replacement home in the construction side, so they are, they can, they, they comprise of that working group. Then we've got the Emotional and Spiritual Need, which is led by David Payne, and the pastors for the spiritual and emotional help. And along within the Unmet Needs, that is Beth Palmer, she is chairing that group. And across the top is the Board of Directors for the working groups that I just mentioned. If you go down, we've got some subcommittees, too. Communications, led by Tim Rye and Peterson Health. Government Affairs, we haven't put that group together yet, gonna, we would like to approach the Chamber of Commerce, who has an existing government affairs organization, to plug in, to plug into that working group. Economic Development Working Group is led by Kelly Hagemeyer. The Tourism is led by, who's leading? John Reibenberg, yes, is leading that with Sudi, oh, Sudi, oh my gosh, with Julie Davis. For the Tourism, we have Arts and Cultural, and that is being led by Catherine Boyet. The Emergency and Public Safety Group, we've, I've contacted the leadership there, we have not formally formed that group together yet. They are working with Tara Bushno and the Flood Warning System, they are attending those meetings. Thanks, Chief, for having representatives there. Chief Maloney as well, along with volunteer fire departments, along with Doug Thomas, are a part of that working group, which is the Flood Warning System. And then we've got Red Cross with Mass Care. Then Infrastructure, we have, and that's a broad term, that would be for any infrastructure needs, whether it be within the city, whether it be in the county, whether it be for Ingram. And that is led by, John Dunn is the chair of that. And then we've got the Legal Assistance down there, and that is one of the VOADs that's in town, that offers legal assistance, free legal assistance to those that were affected by the flood. And they're one of our volunteer VOADs here. As we go down to the line below, these are current paid positions, support staff for the Long-Term Recovery Group and VOAD partnerships. Not all of these are filled, these are future positions that we, that the Long-Term Recovery Group feels are necessary to assist them in the long-term recovery, and will be paid positions. These paid positions, funding will be reached by outside funding partners. We do have some outside sources that have reached out to us. Rebuild Texas wants to get... Rebuild Texas wants to give $350,000 to fill positions that the Long-Term Recovery Group will need. So we're still ongoing in the, in the full paid positions that will be a part of long-term recovery and assisting all of these long-term recovery groups. Also too, this will, there we go, this will help some too, there we go. These are all of the Cur Together Board of Directors and the folks that are associated with those working groups. Now, they're not all that's on, these working groups range from anywhere between five to an excess of 20 per group, and they manage their own groups. They add folks as they see necessary to these groups. So all of these, all of these chairs and vice chairs of these working groups are in charge of their groups and reporting up to the Long-Term Recovery Group Board. Any questions on Cur Together or Long-Term Recovery?
Questions or comments?
Great. I'll move on real quick to Cur EDC. We do have, again, some businesses that are looking at, small businesses looking at coming to our area that Kelly, Teresa and myself will be meeting with, along with, talked to Kurt Griffin at the airport. We're going to schedule a time for all of us to go out there and get caught up on what's going on at the airport with their master planning. And I also have a meeting this week, time not set exactly, with Mega Crete. Salvador will be coming into town to visit and we're going to set some time aside to visit and get an update on Mega Crete.
Thank you.
At this time, briefly, I'd like to ask Teresa to come up and kind of give the council an update on where we are as far as case management.
Thank you. So as you know, the Community Foundation has funded 20 case managers for their efforts in dispersing their funds related to their pillars. The first pillars being the temporary housing, and then they'll be doing RV replacement, rebuild efforts, and then moving into emotional and spiritual care, and then into business recovery or economic development recovery, and then long-term resiliency planning. So with that development of case management efforts on the Community Foundation side, we realized very quickly with the Long-Term Recovery Group that we still had pockets of individuals that were doing case management in our community that also needed some additional case management training, both to ensure that we're all communicating on the same page as far as what case management is, what, how to coordinate those efforts, entering into data sharing agreement so that we can begin to reconcile all of the data, the lists that are out there, all of the individuals that are being assisted so that we can ensure that we're not duplicating benefits. So last week, the Long-Term Recovery Group had the opportunity through endeavors to do a two-day intensive disaster case management training. Some of the case managers from the Community Foundation were able to participate in that training, in addition to individuals in the community that were not funded, but again, wanted to continue their efforts in case management. So we had about seven individuals. Some of them were even volunteer organization partners. So these individuals wanted to ensure that they had a complete understanding of what disaster case management is and so that they can be helpful in those coordinated efforts. So it was two-day intensive. It was a lot of information. There were some individuals that went through that case management training and said, this wasn't what I thought it was, and I think that my talents would be best utilized elsewhere. And we knew that was going to happen. The other component to that is that we wanted to ensure that as the community continues to roll out training and develop their disaster case management based on the number of individuals that they're assessing, we, kind of going back to workforce development and economic development hat, we wanted to ensure that we're creating a pipeline of individuals that are ready to take over as people, kind of the ebb and flow of disaster case management. Really, the statistics are pretty staggering at how quickly the burnout rate is for disaster case managers because it's very intensive. And so we wanted to ensure that our community is educated and we have people in the pipeline that are trained for disaster case management to kind of take over and also provide a support role for those that are choosing to step into that role. Had a great conversation with Todd a little bit today about what is the difference between a caseworker and a case manager? What is that, what's the difference in that terminology? And one of the ways it was explained to me that made a lot of sense was that when we're doing disaster case work, it's really the emergency response phase of working with individuals. And so it's more of a triage phase. So think of somebody that's responding as an EMT, right? They're there to respond to your emergency, to get you stable. And then disaster case manager really step in for the long-term recovery process. So think of them as like your doctor or your primary care physician, right? They're putting together a very comprehensive plan to treat you as an individual and to stabilize you and to ensure that you are able to fully recover. So that's what we're, that's what we're doing with disaster case management. We're continuing to partner with the Community Foundation on what that full picture looks like. We are quickly realizing that 20 case managers is not enough based on the assessments that are coming in. And so you'll see another round of disaster case managers that are funded through the Community Foundation to ensure that every individual is being walked through this process to full recovery. Any questions?
Any questions?
Happy, happy this is happening.
Good.
I want to say, before Kelly gets up, do you have something for us too, Kelly? Please, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't realize you were speaking.
I will be, no, next time I will be more thorough that all three of us might be speaking. I will give you all just a brief update for business development so that you all can have a short break until you're, into your next meeting. For the business recovery, we are, for that group, we are, at this time, compiling information and identifying businesses. We're putting them into different categories and looking at their vulnerability. We're looking about roughly 70 directly affected businesses, 20 of those being in Curville. And so then we are prioritizing those for recovery and rebuild, which goes back to JEM, which is there at the bottom. And we're excited to be partnering with them for business case management. And they will be doing like warehousing, construction, business grants, those types of things. And there will also be more job opportunities within that, within JEM to, that those will be local jobs. We are also recognizing the economic impact in the Economic Development Working Group that all the businesses are feeling. And so we are requesting that the Communications Working Group, that we can collaborate with them on some sort of bi-local campaign to help out. We're especially hearing from the restaurant businesses that they have definitely felt the squeeze the last couple of months. We, the Long-Term Recovery Group is looking into an economic impact study options. So we're hoping maybe in the, in the next month or so, we might have an update of how we will move forward with one of those. And last but not least, the SBA for physical damages, that deadline is next Monday, the 28th, and we are working on filing an extension. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Please.
70 affected businesses in Curville.
No, and that's in the whole Cur, that's in, that's in the whole county. And then about 20 directly affected.
I thought that was a lot. So I know 1011, for instance, was one of those, and Lake House may have been one of those. Can you give me another couple of examples of, you know, really harshly affected?
Dieter Riverside Nature Center, the two kayak companies.
Okay.
Looks, yeah.
Thank you. I don't know why I was drawing a blank. I was trying to tell someone the other day who those could be and I just couldn't think.
And also any short-term rentals that were within Curville that were there on the river.
Any other questions for Kelly? Thank you, ma'am. What I want to, I want to say very briefly, we are faced with a lot of unknowns. We don't know how much Bear Creek Bridge is going to cost. We don't know when the River Trail is going to open up. A lot of unknowns. We have some knowns. And their names are Todd, Teresa, Kelly, and Mindy Windley. And what I know is y'all are doing a great job. And I'm very, very, very thankful that you've taken this on and you're doing it so gracefully and well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I know this is a message, or this is a question for the county, but can anybody in this room answer when the Hill Country Youth Event Center might be available for use?
No one's answering.
I don't, I don't, I don't.
They talked about it in Commissioner's Court yesterday.
There was an extension to 15th. Don't, we don't know yet.
That's another unknown.
Just curious.
All right. Our next item is executive session, which we do not need. So what I'm going to go ahead and do is adjourn this meeting at 5:40. Our next meeting is at 6:00.